Congratulations.
I know, I'm missing my last one for good.
That's well, how are you?
What happened?
I need to. I am, but it's a little. I'm very well done.
I know. I get it. When they go low, I go down.
Well, federal denials will uh hold people quarters. But allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the Philippines, one nation, one God, indivisible, omnipotent. Christie Briggs, President, Christie Nivy.
President.
Christie Ellis.
President.
Deputy Mayor Younger.
President.
Okay, um so we're gonna jump ahead. We get to do something that is always great when we can bring in a community member lifelong into the village workforce, specifically our police department. So if everyone's on board, I would like to jump ahead to motion nine. To appoint Jason Kinsey as our part-time uh police department dispatcher at the training rate of eighteen dollars and fifteen cents per hour. On the recommendation of uh the chief.
I'll vote.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I.
Jason. As I said, Jason, it's uh my graduate down in the family from now, I've got the substantial roots in the village and it's always a pleasure to bring somebody in. He works at the hospital alongside, plus we won't hold up against him, but um he's uh definitely uh we look forward to have. He'd be a great role model for other children to follow him.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
And great family support, thanks you especially, so thank you.
Yeah.
Now I'd just like to add that uh if uh you know we ever had one point.
Wow, here we go. You're you're probably.
No, you're already approved.
That's what I was telling you here.
Congratulations. Very amazing, okay. Um so we'll go.
Sal.
Oh, yeah, Sal, you're okay, hey, Sal. So we will, we will do this next uh motion uh which is uh to appoint uh Officer Salvatore Gianno.
Tordano.
Tordano, sorry, I haven't appointed. Uh to the position of provisional police sergeant, step one of the salary of seventy-six thousand dollars, seventy-six thousand two hundred and fourteen dollars upon the recommendation of the police chief effective September tenth. Um he will complete a probationary period of one year effective from the date of his passing with civil service examination for police sergeant.
I'd just like to add that um the process, we had an interview process, we put it out there, posted it for any candidates. Uh we had a few of interested candidates, the board members, TJ Briggs and Deputy Mayor Younger. Uh myself conducted the interviews. The interviewing process, spent year, number of years, spent year, seven years full-time, but think seven or eight years part-time. So. At the end, I don't know if the board members want to comment on that interview, um did a great job and I'll give a representation. So uh his mother is here and his daughters, if they can stand up.
Runner, I'll move it. All in favor?
Aye.
Hi, congratulations.
Looks where I'm at, eleven page on Wednesday.
And I and I agree, chief. From the interview process, it did well and it's always good to have, you know, long-lasting officers that's interested in staying here. Moving up, doing great things, well as. Encying, you know, being part of this community and really wanting to be, wanting to stay here, so. Thank you.
Thank you. So, congratulations.
One other thing, I have this on our board chair, so I was contacted by Robert Bergen today.
Okay.
Uh he had forgotten to come to the official. The uh nine eleven memorial ceremony that's here every year, so it's uh tragic to happen. Uh who's asking for the village ward where uh the clover could be square uh beginning at six p.m. and lasting probably seven thirty.
Well, there's.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks for you there, appreciate it, thanks. Okay, uh so we will jump up to the approval of minutes for the August.
I'll make the motion.
One second. Any discussion? All all in favor?
I'm aye.
Okay, um we jump into the officials, um so we see.
I'm afraid to know how.
Lawn, box trucks and/or tractor trailer come all the way down Catherine Street. Would you like to come speak to apartment two as a Catherine Street resident? Break it out though. I don't, he he uh sent us a letter uh making the request.
So so basically, we've had um cars coming through years down Catherine Street. Turning around, we're seeing my drive because I'm at the end of the street. And recently, there's been um last couple of months, there's been these U-hauls that have come. They don't realize that it's dead a street. Can you imagine trying to turn around a U-Haul at the end of my street? Mike actually being former truck driver has has helped them do it, he actually did it for one, guided the second. But what happens is is that we end up with ruts on our lawns.
Sure.
Because you have to maneuver it so that you could get it to turn around to go down the street, so I like the idea very much of the no outlet sign.
So so Eddie, um you know, kind of knowing that layout. I was thinking and I'm interested in your opinion is having a no outlet sign right at where the intersection with Helen is. Because that's kind of like a point where they can make a K.
To make a K before that.
If they can get out or back down if they want to at least, that's kind of really their last chance to not get into the situation.
Yeah, because half the street also for the.
I.
Yeah, maybe turn either, so both streets, like once you go in there, you can't get out.
Yeah.
I believe we have a couple, so yeah.
Okay, I I know there's one at camp and I think what confuses that is they think maybe it's the one end of camp as you keep going up. Um they make the turn and then who knows?
They come, they come down Catherine Street, so you're looking to go up the hill, the hill street extension, so.
Yeah.
And I think the GPS is not recognizing that street that's going there, that's why they go, anyway, thank you.
So in in our paperwork, now I think it will also mention about as you enter uh Camp Street, we're right there. Because there there's no outlet when you go in there, there is no outlet.
Yes.
Right.
But so Eddie, is there one though?
I believe there is at the bottom of Camp Extension.
The bottom. Oh, oh, okay, so we need one, okay, yeah. Let's.
Then you you, once you go into Camp Street, you cannot come out unless you come out back from Camp Street or.
Yeah.
Right. You go by Fleckenstein or something like that or ground by Elliott, but but there's no way through all dead ends. Actually, all.
So my question, you guys, wait stop, let's guys for an hour, what you like to have.
It's a good question, I mean, because it's kind of a weird situation, maybe we do a walk over there one day and just kind of get a general sense, I mean. I could see one definitely at camp and I almost wonder if there were one on the right on once you get at the Highland Terrace just before. Because I think sometimes people just go down that and they think, oh, maybe it was just for camp and you know, the other two are who knows, you know. Um also, I want to bring up, you know, it didn't formally write, but I think it's worth mentioning. Um Howard, what's Howard's last name, Fire Firefighter Tru?
Yeah.
Our true, I made a request about putting a blind driveway sign just on Market Street before it makes the right turn onto that little bypass that gets you back out into two oh nine. It it's not unreasonable, I've seen people fly around that turn right there and come right out and I don't know if that's something we could look into, the placement, you know, like basically just before you make that right there, pass it on now. Yeah, just so that.
I, okay, I'll I'll go with Skeeter, uh that tomorrow I get something Wednesday, I'll stop by.
Um yeah, yeah, well, we're we're milling right now, so if you better anticipate the last day of milling. Should be Wednesday, it should be midday, TJ, so want to stop by around like one thirty to five.
Yeah, okay, I'm getting.
Okay, okay. Okay, um. John, we uh had your letter requesting to see if we would be entertaining the idea of taking that bus stop uh that has been there for a very long time, but effectively never used as such because there's no regular bus service. Not any bus service to it, um and to see if we would be willing to uh allow it to be moved to the senior housing location by the hospital. You know, wanted to work that with everybody, I mean.
Second.
Yeah, I I don't see anybody ever use it.
Yeah, what is the, what do we have to do to donate to, what are the steps that, do we all just agree and then it's taken art, do we?
I think we need to access it, I think that would be one part, I, it's a good question, we can ask Ian just to confirm if there's any other steps.
Like, does she have to get removed, do we have to, do we donate before that, does county remove it for us?
I think kind of take your.
On there.
Once you give it up, they they'll.
They'll do their act.
Actually definitely stick them out, she will have the Lubbock crew, they'll come in, you know, person at the pad over there, get her ready to go. Essentially, see or look at it, those things just not bolts, it's just anchors on the on the bottom feet. They get a COVID, they'll only be left there as a pad.
Okay.
So a lot of.
I'll uh approve it pending uh especially.
He is.
Yeah.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, um. Not on the agenda, but I'd love if you had Paul Zito come up uh representing the planning board and also represent itself uh to talk about uh some part of the.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm here tonight because I I spoke with mayor, spoke with chairman of the planning board Stekler about an issue that's come up a couple of times, which is electric vehicle charging. Um and just as a matter of process, uh when we've looked at the the issue, it seems like there might be an opportunity to amend our zoning ordinance. Ultimately, the zoning ordinance, if it is amended, is something that's evaluated by the planning board, ultimately voted on by the voting board because of its local law. And so we thought that the most appropriate way to approach this was to at least tell you the village board for transparency that we're considering evaluating a amendment to the zoning ordinance, specifically in this case, it's parking. So what we've seen a couple of times now, particularly uh over by the Taco Bell, is that there's been a request to install electric vehicle charging, level three charging, so fast charging. Um and what we've had to grapple with at the planning board is whether or not when you install level three charging or any charging whatsoever, uh whether or not that counts towards your parking requirements, right? And so if you install electric vehicle charging, in theory, that space is not fully dedicated for the commercial, retail or residential use that was originally kind of letting whatever, right? Our sense is that this is something we need to evaluate and at least accommodate for in an amendment to our zoning work, so our parking work.
You say level three, what what does that mean? Because I do see something being of, what is a level three charging station?
Great, that's something that I can, I'll talk about in broad strokes, but that's something that we would analyze and define for your consideration. So level one, think about it in terms of time, level one charging is like you're plugging it into an outlet in your wall in your house that takes like twenty-four hours for a car to charge. Level two is like if I attach my car to, you would plug your washer dryer or your oven into, and that charges it.
Yeah.
Faster, right? Level three, you get to this point where it's a little bit more interesting, where it has to go, it has to connect directly to the grid, so it has to be a power source from Con Ed. From Central Hudson, right?
It is.
Uh to the, to a, to a uh battery pack that is under the pad where the car is charging. Because it's fastest to charge from battery to battery because they have a similar ability to connectivity. And in that instance, you can charge a car not in several hours, not in a day, but in forty-five minutes. And so that's really where, that's our North Star today, is really to encourage and to analyze how to encourage and accommodate for level three charging. We think that knowing that from NYSRDA that uh we expect a three hundred percent increase in EV vehicles in our community by twenty thirty, something that we should accommodate for. We also know that the state festival is around reducing our greenhouse gas emissions by twenty fifty, by eighty-five percent. We also know it's an economic development opportunity for us if people want to come to shop in Allenville, to have the opportunity to charge in Allenville, maybe for that forty-five minutes, go to all of the different establishments, et cetera.
So across the street, that level three?
I think it's level two, I don't know.
One that currently there.
Yeah, that's level two.
That's level two, too.
And the ones it looks like that are going to get over, I think, get it out.
Yeah, probably the level three.
Or look, because that's why I saw them, that's why I was trying to do offer, okay, glad.
Yes. And so we have, so effectively where we are now is considering a broad number of factors for your ultimate approval, right? So. One, accommodate for in our parking ordinance, whether or not level one, two or three charging uh counts towards your parking requirement. Our parking ordinance is well over twenty years old, it never thought about EV charging whatsoever. So making sure that we're factored for that because us have, as a planning board, making an accommodation on a case-by-case basis provides an opportunity for us to be consistent and we should, right? The second order of magnitude is, you know, for our home charging, right? Is level two sufficient? Uh if we're going to allow for people to accommodate for EV charging, it's just, it's just trying to make sure that for each of the different property typologies, we have the right accommodations. We're also going to consider um, you know, whether or not there are opportunities for incentives. So for example, we have new construction and new facilities, whether we can require like five percent charging fee for EV or whether or not, you know, if we typically require two parking spaces, if you put in two or three EV spaces, we'll give you a discount of the space or two when you're, when you're when we're approving your site line, so it's really just thinking about what we want for the future, making sure that we have the right ecosystem for electric vehicle charging. Again, at this point, I'm just giving broad set of parameters to consideration. For transparency sake, we, planning board will analyze based on town Austin or village Austin, uh I think village of town colony have recently passed ordinances that look like these models, all of this and other models. Um and ultimately deliberate because we were also delivered to body and then we'll we'll ultimately have to pass some things for your sort of. So that's my.
Great. Thanks, Mark.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank. Okay, um is there anyone else here to speak to the board tonight that's not on our agenda? Anybody else would like to address the board? Okay. Um so discussion, uh we had talked about uh potentially extending or rather adopting a new local law which would extend the amount of money reserved fund uh from any mares from five to twenty years as the original law allowed. Ian has prepared uh a local law, which would be local law number four of twenty twenty-five uh for our consideration. Um you know, the last item that we had discussed is how long we want to actually extend it. Um again, we can do it from anywhere from five to twenty years. Anybody have any jump out opinion and I'm inclined to just say twenty, the money will likely be gone well before that.
Yeah.
Village burned through four million uh in thirty years. Um and then, you know, we can still vote out what we're going to use it for, or the people can vote out what it's going to be used for.
Okay, I believe the same format that we had, I think we should keep it.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll um with that, uh we'll instruct Ian to notice for uh, you know, the the law will for twenty years. Uh the reserve fund will be established for twenty years again, um and so with that, if I can have a motion to schedule, actually, let's look at.
Yeah.
Jump ahead. Um. So we need ten days, right, and then for a public hearing, uh by noticing, can't have it into the paper until.
I could have it there tomorrow.
Okay.
I already have the.
So I've set it up for this.
Good, because it sounds like I could have those.
I'll I'll move to schedule a public hearing.
For local law number four.
For September one second, at six fifty.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, okay, um. Next discussion item is water sewer billing, uh the conversion that's going on, uh which will hopefully bring us into the twenty-first century, we can pay online if we so choose to. Uh the staff has been working tirelessly, tirelessly, let's just say, on uh working through that with our vendor. Um it has also afforded us an opportunity to effectively conduct a account-by-account audit uh of all of our water and sewer accounts, which has been a great thing, too. It also gives us a great reference sheet after this, so that as we work through our water and sewer accounts over the years, we'll have this great report sheet uh that'll help us, I think, create a little more accountability, accuracy and accountability. Um so with that, right now, we're on track so that this upcoming quarter, if we'll be under the new billing system, the bills will look very similar to what we normally receive. But the whole backend is completely different, which then opens us up to, which we'll be using Accupund, which is our accounting, municipal accounting software, uh which will be directly integrated, so that'll be a great thing, but also specifically allow people to pay online through our online payment. Yeah.
Yeah.
So under, under our resolutions number five. Validating. Mostly you'd rate classes to similar grade class that have identical base rates of seventy-nine dollars over changes.
So just to clarify that, um what it is, is that we have effectively a single rate code for every certain nominal amount of uh multi-unit dwellings. Um they all have the same water and sewer rates, they all have the same uh base rate. Uh it was decided through this process that who could better consolidate them and use a multiplier per unit because there's no other differential other than this escalating thirty dollars for every multiplication. Um and that can just be done on the backend, so it's eliminating twenty rate codes and it just helps us enhance everything. Yeah, so with that, uh we have a motion to consolidate it, motion second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um. And just for everybody's clarity, especially in the age of Central Hudson botching their billing uh uh software. But so what we're doing is just in case we get to the to the line where we have to make the decision in about a week.
And we're running low.
Yeah, exactly, so that if we feel like it's, something's off or we don't feel confident rolling it out, we're simultaneously running our our original software, we'll conduct effectively another billing cycle internally as a backup and then we'll just push it out just like we normally did and people should not notice the difference.
Okay, great.
Um okay, so thank you, member five is done.
Yep.
Yep, uh so if I can have, and this is for uh, I think Housing Authority is continuing their conversion, which has been very drawn out for them, uh so they are asking for authorization for me to sign a request to release the funds of certification, the Allenville Housing Authority.
So is it the conversion done?
No.
I'll move it.
So what is the request for sort of to, what are they requesting?
Are are basically they're. We're the authority to oversee them, so they need our permission to release those funds as a part of the transactional component of the conversion and they can't do that without us.
They're nearing the end.
That's the hope, I mean, they have felt like they were near the end for a very long time, it certainly seems like a step closer. I don't want to speak for them, but you know, I think this is part of their process to get closer.
I'm sorry.
It's okay, you want to make the motion?
No.
Okay, is that in, all in favor? Okay, uh can I have a, can I have a uh resolution authorizing the submission of a New York State EFC Clean Water State Revolving Fund and Water Infrastructure and funding application, uh this is a roll call vote.
So I'll move it.
Second.
Um trustee Briggs.
Aye.
Trustee Nivy.
Aye.
Uh trustee Ellis.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Younger.
Aye.
Um can I have a motion authorizing uh payment to Daniel Pollan in the amount of one hundred and fifty-one dollars and fifty-two cents for mileage from July twenty-fifth to August twenty-fifth?
Motion.
All in favor? Uh can I have a motion uh accepting the resignation of uh Thomas Van Hooven with regret uh effective August twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five?
Make the motion.
So. All in favor?
Aye.
Um Tom was our former operator, he came back for about a year part-time to help us out. Uh it's a great opportunity when you can pick someone who still wants to work a little bit and bring their knowledge back to the village, so thank you, Tom.
Yeah.
Um it's great to have him, he was a wealth of knowledge. Um can I have a motion au- uh authorizing fall cleanup schedule on the recommendation of the street department board?
I'll make the motion.
Say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number eight. Uh a motion to approve circulation pump for Billy Pollan, the amount of two thousand eight hundred dollars and twenty-eight cents, this the low, I was only able to receive two uh two quotes for this, but this was substantially lower.
Motion.
Second.
Twenty-eight, twenty-eight, thirty.
Thank you, twenty-eight, twenty-eight, thirty. All in favor? Um the other item, I I wouldn't have it on the discussion just because it came quickly up and I forgot to add it in. Um New York Forward and the DRI funding component uh was announced last week, canceled Friday. Basically, round four of New York Forward is go live now. Um we had accepted a proposal uh from Rondell Consulting uh for project and grant writing services for New York Forward application contingent. Uh that the actual monies were announced, uh it was, ended up being announced almost a month later than they had historically done. Uh but with that, uh if I can have a motion to approve my signing of the agreement with Rondell Consulting, I'll move it.
Okay.
All in favor? Thank you. Before we get to the tournament, I would like to go to executive session, it's just uh. Before we get to the tournament, I would like to go to executive session, it's just, I'll be going through traction a matter.
Okay.
But then we'll jump back and court, court cloud, trustee Briggs. And we can do, trustee Ivy.
No.
Christie Ellis.
Um Maude Citizen of the Year dinner is on Thursday the twenty-fifth at Honors Haven, there's tickets still available, it's um it'll be a good event, I think the Noonday Club is throwing it, and I think Maude Bruce has done so much for our community, it'd be good to see people there. Um I also wanted to talk about Jason Kinsey, who we just approved, I think that it's good that we uh Chris, that we even mentioned him in the paper more for our views and our, our kids, like my son's age. They see someone who graduated from Allenville doing positive things, and I think it's good for them to have a role model like that and see it and us to broadcast things like that in the paper as well, because we don't get to see that very often. So I think that's very positive, and I want that to, for, for people to see it, especially young kids, especially what's going on here in the village of Allenville with the kids as it is now, and I think, I, I, I thank Jason, even though he's not here, for being one of those role model.
Absolutely, that's, you know, that's a great point, um you know, Chris, maybe I'll leave in photo uh with Jason and the, you know.
I know.
I just think it's important to show kids that, and they don't get to see that, I think that.
Yep.
It should be almost, especially things going on now with those kids.
Do you have contact with them?
Yes.
Could you also send a photo?
Sure.
You can.
Basketball, that's them.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Um. Deputy Mayor.
I have it.
Okay, and likewise, uh so with that, if I can have a motion to adjutant executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
You're answering back?
We are not coming back.